All right, let me get my paperwork in front of me. Welcome to our September 30th, 2019 Board of Supervisors meeting. And I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask Craig Slay if he would say a prayer for us.
Thank you as we come together now to close out this fiscal year. Thank you, Lord, for the year that you've given us. Thank you for the blessings of it. Father, I pray that you would continue to give guidance and wisdom through these gentlemen. Thank you for their sacrifices that they make to this community. Lord, we don't take that for granted. We thank you for it. Father, I thank you that you've given us such exceptional law enforcement, emergency response, the teams that you've put together for us. Lord, thank you for that. Father, I pray that you would continue to protect them and preserve them as they do what they do.
Amen. Thank you, Craig. All right, we have, under our public comments, CEASPA representatives Clayton Branch, Chris Queen, Brett Bowlin. Now, y'all here? Come on forward.
Yep.
Dan is not here.
I see that.
He had something come up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah.
I'm Clayton Branch. This is Brett Bowlin. He's our engineer for home services. Chris.
Yeah, I mean, come on down.
Chris is our manager of home services.
Well.
How are y'all this morning?
It's Monday.
Good.
We were asked to come here this morning. We're working with Mike. Obviously, we're deploying our fiber network here in Rankin County. Citizens are excited to have the services we're going to bring. Internet, television, and home telephome. But through that process, it's pretty complex of getting that fiber in the ground. So through the deployment process, we, there've been damages. There've been some concerns with the easement, right away, where we're putting the fiber, the condition of which we're doing it, in the manner we're doing it. Some damages to residential utilities, to some mainline utilities. And so we're here today to understand and own that process. You know, we recognize the challenges that we're creating for some of the community and the residents, and you guys having to hear from the residents. And so we, we recognize that and take full ownership of it. We recognize also that through that deployment process, there are some expectations that CEASPA will do a better job moving forward, working with Mike, working with the city engineer on the placement of the fiber. We've implemented some changes in the last week. Last week, we were shut down in order to kind of bring some calm to this and really kind of step back and take a look at how we're deploying it. So through that process, we brought in all of our contractors. We sat them down and went through a full list of items that will hopefully, based on the things we've heard from the community and from the residents and from this board and from Mike and his team, will address these things. And they include really the deployment process being more transparent, communicating to the residents, letting them understand exactly what we're doing, why we're doing it, and kind of what that process looks like, as well as providing some direct phone numbers to my team and some of the individuals that work here in Ridgeland that will be able to answer their questions, come to their house, look at their concerns, restore their property to the previous condition. And those are kind of the things that we pride ourselves on. And I understand that at the speed that we've been going, that we may have missed the mark on some of those things. And so we're here to kind of just reassure the board today and the residents of Rankin County that we're not here to come in through the middle of the night and hide behind the bushes, so to speak. I mean, we're here to take full ownership of kind of how we deploy. And what we're planning to do is to be able to continue to deploy those services and do it in the right way.
If y'all can do just what you said, I'll be the happiest man in the whole USA. I understand that there's water lines that are running like this, and you're in your utility, and the water lines have been there for 20 years or more, and they, the water company doesn't even know where they're at. I understand those things when you hit them, but when you hit them, and I had one guy, and Daniel, I think, has had more problems than I, than me, but I had one guy that had water off, it was either four or five days out of a week getting wrecked. And I need y'all to help me. I can't, I mean, I can't, I tell him, sir, I don't work, same, I don't work for the water company. You know, I do know there's a utility, and I know that there's obstacles, but I need y'all to be able to reach back to him.
Sure.
I mean, it would help us a lot to have a working, a cooperative type deal, especially with our road manager.
Correct.
Where we work together and we don't feel like we can't get in touch with you.
Yeah, I like a lot of what you just said.
Right.
And like Steve said, you know, if y'all can follow through what you just said, I think we'll all be on the same page.
I agree. And then we, we take ownership that we may have not have been as transparent in the past or as, work as close with the residents as we should have. We have a team of project supervisors that are CEASPA employees that live here in the community. I'm a Rankin County citizen myself, so is Brett. So I understand the frustrations when a company comes in and does things in a way that maybe not, maybe isn't as transparent or as honest as you would want it to be. So we want to take, we want to take ownership of that and recognize that we're going to do some things differently. So we've, we've implemented a call, a phone number that our residents, we're going to hand them out, we're going to mail them out, we're going to let them know. It's not a sales pitch. Basically, if you have issues, call us. We're going to drive over to your house, we're going to call you, we're going to look at your property immediately. We're going to make sure we restore it to the way it was, whether that's sod or whether that's backfilling something where there was a water damage. Working with USIC, the locate company, while they don't directly work for us, they locate for Atmos and these other utility companies. We met with them last week. We're going to work more closely with them, let them know where we're planning to go so they can have a better forecast of how they need to, you know, staff their team so they can locate utilities throughout the county and the area. So we think these are the right steps. Obviously, we've got to show good faith and follow through on those, and that's what we're going to do. Mike's been able to get in contact with us if he needs to, working with the city engineer, which Brett has not fully met him yet, but that's the plan, is to make sure they're on a first-name basis.
We're the county, but that's odd, close enough.
That's right.
He is me.
That's right. And so those are the things we're planning to do. We've already done most of these things. We've already met with our contractors. We've already implemented some of the changes in our own processes. And so we, we, we respect the concerns of the citizens and the board, and we want to show good faith and act appropriately. So that's our intent, and we'll, we'll hold true to that, and you can, you can call me on it.
Well.
One quick question, just to make sure. The telephone number you're going to put out, that's going by 2CEASPA, not the subcontractor?
That is correct. Our subcontractors will handle issues directly in the neighborhood. If, if a resident wants to communicate directly with them, obviously, they're standing there. But if they want to reach out to CEASPA, the phone number will come directly to my team and a member of my team, and we'll be able to handle those issues kind of much more efficiently than maybe in the past where it's had to go through a handful of people.
I think that's part of the problem, too. You get basically frustrated.
That's correct.
Can't get anywhere.
Any other questions?
All that sounds good. I mean, you can do what, that, I think, it's going to be better, it'll better you all the way through.
It'll just, I mean, it's, it's not a big deal. It'll just save me about a thousand phone calls or more. So get ready.
You might get them now.
I'm curious, where are you at in implementing the broadband?
That's a pretty broad question. So I would say in Rankin County, we're on the latter half of our deployment phases right now, meaning we're beyond 50% deployed where we were planning to deploy in this year. 2020 has some additional areas, but I don't think it's as aggressive as what you've seen this year. I'd say our cross gates and Castle Woods builds are probably the most significant remaining. Obviously, those are large neighborhoods, large communities. But where we've been deploying, at the speed at which we've been deploying in this county, I don't, I don't foresee that being the case in 2020. Not that we're not enjoying ourselves over here or anything, but there's just different phases where we're going in other parts of the state. And I think this was, this was going to be the meat of Rankin County this year. And so we're kind of at the peak of that right now. And so our expectation is through the rest of the year, we'll continue those communities we've talked about and some additional ones, but into 2020, it'll probably start scaling down here in this area.
But you're about 50% for?
Probably beyond 50. I'd say closer to 60.
You know, that north and east part of the county is really growing. Really growing.
We've actually got a building going up over at Kitty Hawk.
Yep.
What?
That's on, that's on the schedule.
Oh, there's two Kitty Hawks. Okay. You're talking about the one that comes off Highway 25?
Twenty-five, yes.
Okay. Yeah, there's another one that's up off Cold Bluff Road.
Cold Bluff Road.
It's at the end, or getting right on the corner of the county.
Okay. So I'm assuming you've met with Mike and y'all got everything?
Yes, we met with Mike Monday. We've met prior to that with, with Mr. Craig here and met with the board, I mean, with the team once before as we were getting started. And so we did, I think we, we had a good plan. We kind of started slipping on some things we had originally thought we would, we would be able to do better. Communication is going to be the most critical part, letting people know when we start, letting people know when we're done. I think that'll help Mike's team out a lot because they've got a lot on their plate trying to manage through some of this. So I think this is a good reset. I think it brought us kind of to reality a little bit here and what's going on in the county. And so I appreciate y'all's attention to detail with this. And we apologize that we're even here today having to discuss issues with the residents and the way that we've handled ourselves. So that's not how we do business, not how we want to do business.
I know it falls back on you, but really, we all know it's contractors, whatever contract you have, but still, it falls back no different.
It does. Not going to blame them. It's on us. I mean, we manage them, we hire them, we pick them.
Get their attention, I think that'll help, too.
Definitely. And we brought them in, we brought every one of them in, and it helped this week that they didn't get paid. So I think that's probably the biggest attention getter. So with those comments, I do ask, and you can discuss it with Mike, or, but we are going to continue to present permitting here in the county, obviously, and we would, we would hope that we can continue to have good faith from the board on those permits as we want to move forward. So we do have plans to continue, as we said, this year, so.
That's great, Craig.
Thank you for having this conversation and the attitude that you have.
Definitely. If there's any other questions, you can, you know how to contact me. Mike obviously can get in touch with us. So we appreciate y'all's time this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. President, could I have a moment real quick?
Yes, sir.
While we're talking about broadband, I got a text from Jason Siegfried, who's CEO of Southern Pine, and they're in the process of sending mailers out to their board, to their users to be sure to vote and support the board who is making the decision to build fiber out into its membership out in the rural area. So they want to encourage the members to be able to look out for that. So there it looks, apparently, Southern Pine is, Southern, yeah, Southern Pine. They're making a concerted effort to try to.
I got, I got that, too.
Well, it sounds to me like he wants their, his board reelected.
He does.
Okay.
There, I think there's still a long way.
Oh, sure. They got to start. You got to start somewhere.
Yep.
Yeah, it's a big.
You got to have, you know, either the board's for it or against it, you know, so, you know. That's all I got.
All right. Mr. Carl, Carl Franco.
Morning, Carl.
How y'all doing?
Yeah, yeah, they got some.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm not sure.
I'm here this morning mainly to talk about the, the bids that we received last week on the rerufen of the EOC. I plan to be back Thursday to talk about misdemeanor and courthouse, but I can answer any of those questions this morning. But what I wanted to do is go over the bids. We received six bids last week for rerufen the EOC building. They ranged from a low bid of 192,900, and I think the bid tab you have doesn't have the 900, so we need to correct that to, because the highest one was 310,000. Our estimate was right in the middle of 250,000, so we would have been the fourth-low bidder. So I don't know that you need, I was discussing decimals earlier. But anyhow, we feel like we got a real good bid. The low bidder was M&amp;S Roofing. They're the same ones doing the DHS, and they're just about finished with it. And we had an alternate, which was an add of $8,400. And that is what we've done. We originally were painting metal wall panels, and the $8,400 would be replacing. But at this point in time, I would say, and I've talked to the low bidder, let's hold off accepting that. Let's see, we were going to do a test paint to see how the paint did, maybe. And, and if we want to go back and replacing those metal panels, I think we can still get it in the same.
What was the reason for wanting to put that as an alternate?
Well, we just, usually, painting is, is more of a maintenance item. You have to come back. If you replace the panels, then it's done. But they're just, they're old, they're, you know, they're, they need to be either refinished or, or either replaced, but it's not.
At 8,400, that's not just a huge.
What's the difference in, in painting them per, let's say, square foot or, or, or replacing them?
Well, the paintings are in that bid, and the painting is, it very, we got a lot of different prices of painting, usually 50 cents to a dollar a square foot, and the metal panels are going to be probably five to eight times the cost of that to replace them. The other thing about replacing the metal panels, and we want to get this price in there, is once you take the metal panels off, we're not exactly sure what we're going to find behind there. Could be some rotten stuff, and if we do, it may need to be replaced anyhow. But I guess what I'm saying and talking with the, the low bidders, let's, maybe before we accept adding another $8,400, if that would be y'all's desire, let's do a little more investigation on it to make sure. Now, we do have, in this, in this bid of 192,000, it's still $20,000 contingency in there. Of course, we don't have to use that, but, so it's not like we're going to, we're going to jump over there. I guess my recommendation right now would be to certainly accept the low bid, the base bid, and then maybe wait and see on replacing the metal panels. See if, see if painting is going to do the job. Now, it's not just a, you know, it's a more, it's a stronger, more durable paint, but it's still always, you know, some, some maintenance on it. But I guess those panels have been there since the beginning, so.
Mr. Slay, would it be appropriate to, I'm trying to think of a way to keep, if Carl finds what he needs, finds what he's got and needs to go ahead and move forward, place the panels, keep him having to come back, or wait an additional two weeks from us to do? Is there some way we can do a contingency here to give him the authority to make that decision, or is that still going to need to come back to us?
You've already got a contingency built in. And at this point, my thought is Carl's going to be back in front of us regardless on lots of different things. So more than likely, we'll be talking about the courthouse.
But if it's, if it's within the contingency amount, the 20 grand, whatever, that he can go ahead and say, yeah, go ahead and fix that, correct, as long as it's within 192?
Right.
And, and, and talking with him, it's not, he, the roofer, if we decide, he still thinks it'd be in that $8,000 range. He doesn't think it, he called, he called several different panel suppliers. The other thing you'll see on your bid tab, we've got a couple of unit prices, and we do that in case, for some reason, when they take the roof off, there's a rotten deck. So we always like to get those prices up front or some wet insulation. We don't, we don't anticipate a major deal on that, but we like to have those prices already defined just in case as they take that deck off, we've got those prices already fixed. So I guess the bottom line is I would recommend acceptance of the low bid of M&amp;S Roofing at 192,900, base bid.
I make that motion, Mr. President.
All right. We have a motion by Bob, second by Jay, to accept this low bid. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes for M and, I think it's M&amp;S glasses, or it's either MS and S or M&amp;S.
How long will it take them, y'all, just for?
Somewhere between 100 and 120 days. This is a much more complicated roof than the DHS.
Oh, yeah, we got plenty of time to worry about sending a painter or replacement in. It's not going to be there done in two weeks.
Well, I think, I do think in talking again with the contractor, I didn't say this, he feels he's going to be ahead of that, but, you know.
You've done it now, Carl.
I know it.
Yeah, they'll be talking this time next year.
You know, more than likely, they pull it off. It's been leaking. They're going to find some bad wood.
That's what I'm thinking. That's why we want to define the unit prices. But I still, I don't think it's going to be anywhere near the contingency allowance.
No.
But, but that's, that's what I'm thinking, too, and, and if the weather stays like it's been the last, and of course, this is the driest time of the year, they can get on it pretty quickly. Or soon as I say that, we'll.
It's loose.
That's right.
Tropical storm. All right.
Yeah, take that roof off and see, we're going to rain then.
Craig, before we.
You're right, take the roof off.
Yeah. Before we go further, while we're still under this public comments, do we have any permits that are out there from these guys that we need to address today?
I'm going to have to ask Mike to help me.
What I'd like to do is we'll go ahead and lift the stop work order on what they have right now, Steve, and let them go ahead and continue on with what, what we have approved, and then we'll monitor that and move forward from there, working new permits on.
Make a motion, we add that to the agenda.
Second.
All right. Bob makes a motion that we add these, the stop work order to the agenda. Jared seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Both are approved.
Motion passes? Go ahead, Bob.
Motion to approve.
Bob makes a motion to approve lifting this stop work order. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, I did, all right, now that we can move on.
Thank y'all for coming today.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Motion to approve, send agenda?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Bob, second by Jared. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Morning.
Just about all of the rest of the docket is me. The first item under my section is a board order declaring the repair of the emulsion truck and the fog seal equipment is necessary for proper functioning of the road department and finding it's in the best interest of the citizens of Rankin County to authorize those repairs and to both the fog seal and the emulsion truck, ratification and approval of the issuance of purchase orders for repairs of the emulsion truck and the fog seal equipment.
Motion to approve.
Second. Bob makes a motion to approve. Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
How long are we talking about getting it done?
Mike, can you help me? How long, how long until we have the repairs on the motion and fog seal?
We're still working on it.
Yeah.
I mean, right now, what we've done is, is, Derek, we.
I'm just curious, yes, nothing new.
We're having some computer issues, problems on the board.
Yeah.
Just replace it hard and see, see if that gets it. Right now, we've got Wallace to come in.
Right.
He's helping us right now, the next couple of days. Hopefully, we can get our truck up.
How old is that thing?
Fifteen, eighteen years old.
Which is it, fifteen or eighteen?
The truck's on a poor model, Jay.
Oh, okay.
At what, at what point do you draw the line with it, far as fixing?
Well, I mean, we're going, you know, we need to look at getting, as much as we're doing nowadays, we need to look at getting another emulsion truck. I mean, this truck's been giving us problems every year, and it's just gotten to the point that it's not dependable. And I mean, when you're in an emulsion, I mean, you're ordering $10,000, $12,000 a tractor load, and we usually shoot two or three a day, so.
How much are those things?
Around 180, Jay.
Let's go down and get you one.
Yeah.
Go ahead, make the, make the, make the motion.
Didn't, didn't we put that in the, the equipment in the bomb? I'm serious. Equipment is.
It may be one time, I mean, if we get, if we're done, I do.
If he's working 15 to 18 years off this truck now, then that fits the bomb a lot.
Yeah, it definitely does, yeah.
Well, I need to tie it, yes.
We look at it. Yeah, I just curious.
We didn't list it on the thing, but equipment like that is allowed.
Okay.
If I didn't, I'd get a striping truck while you had it.
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute.
Now, wait a minute, while, while we're there on striping.
I'll tell you what.
We ain't on striping, we're on the emulsion.
No, no, while we're on striping, what, where are we, so they'll know, they're asking, when will we come back and start striping?
Derek, what we're doing is, there's so many different parts to our striping deals. We had to go to two quotes. Our regular bid didn't work for the different type of strikers we have. So now, I'm putting together, right now, since we're following the roads, I'm putting together some material that can get to two quotes.
I got a guy that.
On the striping, but.
I got somebody.
Fog seal down, let it cure for a week or so, you know, and then we'll be able to start striping. If we just put a strike down on it, it's just going to suck it up.
Right. I mean, I'm just asking because that's going to next question.
We're probably in those 10 days by before we start, start working on that.
Okay, I'm just trying to head off more questions.
Usually, we try to let it sit for 10 to 15 days before we try.
And we got some we're going to stripe, even though we're not going to overlay, we're not putting a new surface on them. Some of the older roads, we're going to have to look at doing them.
Yeah, aim into that. Can't wait.
That is, that is a very good trick, I can tell you. I see where the state's doing it out on Miami County, I mean, roads that hadn't been resurfaced in years. You go in there and stripe that dude, and it looks, you know, people think, wow, that's popping.
You're going there and put the fog seal down first, and I mean, a lot of people think you can paint the roads, but it's actually a favorite preservation to help reactivate that asphalt, put it down, then put a striping on it. You really make the striping pop out a lot more.
Steve, that's just like putting used set of rims on an old car.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's what it is, all right. All right, thanks. Got off the subject, but that was brought in there.
Did y'all, did y'all vote on item A?
I don't know if we did. They vote, okay.
I got it checked that we, I, I have it checked off that we voted in the past.
Thank you. Item B, Mr. President, if we're ready to move forward, is the authority to issue purchase order for the purchase of a grain drill, which will be used as part of a memorandum of understanding between Rankin County and Mississippi State University Extension Service, and authority to issue the check and payment of the invoice received.
Right. Question, and I'm assuming you're going to cover this, the MOU is, you know, where, where is this, Mike, do you have a place down in your area to make us keep this? I assume that's going to be the point of departure and, and return? When people use it to bring it back, are you involved with this?
Yes, it'll come back to my side, and we'll.
I guess who's keeping up with it?
We'll, we'll keep the drills, we'll keep the microphones. Doug and him are going to do the booking.
Okay.
And Jake, it'll be my understanding, big guy.
So, we, the, the MOU is designed to be flexible enough to account for the paperwork part of the deal, where a user will rent it. My understanding is it's priced on a per acre basis. So, they, they come in and say, I'm gonna, I need the grain drill for a forty acre field. And so there, it's, the rental is priced on the number of acres that you use.
How do we keep up with acres?
That's all...
You gotta counter them?
That's all extension. Extension runs the rental part of the whole deal. They have to oversee how much rent, and who it is, and what the rules and regulations are about when they can get it, and when they have to turn it back in, all that other stuff. That's, that's their part of the MOU. The rent payment will be payable to Rankin County, which is a part of recapturing the cost for Mike's folks having to store it and maintain it.
Who, who washes for the damage?
The maintenance.
Uh, not normal wear and tear.
Maintenance, that's us.
Who's gonna be responsible for it?
That's why we get the money.
We're gonna have a checklist, me and Doug talking about that, we're gonna have a checklist when the grill comes back, we're gonna through the checklist, just letting somebody run into something, invent something. Then I'll turn that information back to Doug, and Doug will, he's gonna handle all that.
They don't have to have, they're gonna have to have some type of, uh, put up something, though, that's gonna be, I just know from other rental companies, that's hard to recoup a lot of times, when they tear up the thunder.
I'll let Doug, you know, Doug handle all this, 'cause he's had this drill in the past.
Right.
And the problem was, he didn't have nobody to maintain the drill, so we're gonna do the maintenance on it, and then he's gonna handle all the booking and everything. I mean, we talked about, you know, a couple different things that you can rent for two days, you know, so, it's not tied up, 'cause you got about a twenty day window, thirty day window you gonna use this drill, you won't be, you know, everybody's gonna be able to keep it.
Yeah, so we won't just get tied up in one place, 'cause I haven't got two yet. Right.
You don't have a standard, you know, yeah, for two weeks, and somebody else over here needs, needs the drills.
Well, that's where it needs some, yeah, 'cause you need some way to be able to keep up, you say I'm doing forty acres, you can run day and night, do a hundred and forty.
Most of the counties around us already do this with, through the extension, I mean, we're not gonna have to reinvent the wheel. It's, uh, the sad thing is whenever our people from your area have to go to Simpson County and try to compete with those people to rent their drill out of their county, and I don't, I mean, I, I'd be the same way with, I'm telling them, this is gonna be for people in Rankin County. We, unless we just don't have anybody wanting to use it, it's not available.
Yeah, I agree, I'm just saying.
But, my people, your people, people from, uh, the Puckett area, whatever, they have to go to another county and try to compete to rent that thing to put in a little rye grass. And then, Mike, as many roads and things as we have where he skins the ground up and throws seed out there on top of it, well, you know, that's probably the most uneconomical way to put your seed out, birds and rain or whatever else. A drill, he can run, and he pulls behind a pickup, he can run that drill out there and have his seed planted without ever dishing or having erosion.
Mr. President, I make motion to approve.
All right. Bob makes motion, and, uh, Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Hey, Craig, before you go into this really big one... If you turn around a little bit, there's a lady behind you, Ms. Lewis. Ms. Lewis, I think it's your birthday. I want to ask Craig to sing you happy birthday.
I know, that's a joke.
Happy birthday, Ms. Lewis.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Ms. Lewis.
Thank you for coming here on your birthday.
Yes, yeah. Ms. Lewis, my, my birthday present, Ms. Lewis, is to not sing.
Oh, my goodness gracious. Item C, Mr. President, is a lengthy item that is designed to account for some of the information that was provided to Rankin County as part of the audit process. Uh, our auditors from the State Auditor's Office advised us that when we're making emergency declarations, that we make it clear in our minutes, uh, the dates and the timeframes, and that helps to establish on the record that it is in fact an emergency. And so this is an emergency declaration that deals with the Pine Brook Sun Division collapsed drainage pipe on September the twenty fifth. Uh, the discovery of the nature of the collapsed pipe was actually made, and so that would be the date establishing the emergency and the need for emergency action. The bid law allows this board to make an emergency declaration for repair work associated with protecting public property, streets, street rights of way and the drainage associated with those, that's what this declaration is about. Uh, what, what that allows is for, uh, the, uh, the contracting with a vendor who is capable of performing those services, and then a ratification of, uh, that contract at a later date, and a payment that is made to that, all as an exception to the bid law. And so that's what you're being asked to do in item C.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We're locked up, man.
Yeah. Bob makes motion to approve, Jay seconds. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, Mr. President, item D is a discussion of and potential action authorized the repair and maintenance of the parking area at Brandon City Hall. This is Rankin County Precinct Number Three Twenty Nine, that's pursuant to Section Twenty Three Fifteen Two Fifty Nine and the authority that's set forth in the Attorney General Opinion that is set forth there.
As y'all recall, we consolidated, we just hush a minute before you get much smarter than I am, and let me finish.
Here we go.
Reluctantly, I will.
As y'all recall, we consolidated two precincts, first five to us and the Armory into this one, put five thousand voters into this building, and some of y'all have probably parked on the gravel area out there that's next to it. It's been out there, the gravel area they've got has been up there probably, what, four or five years?
Yes, sir.
So, uh, we're gonna do that, Mike sort of looked at it, any surprises, any thoughts?
Oh, the gravel park, huh?
It's gravel. What surprise is there, other than us wanting to do it?
In lieu of our elderly citizens who have problems with gravel, uh, we're putting forth the effort to, to accommodate, 'cause the city was kind enough to allow to have this, uh, this precinct.
That was a jitney jungle, I mean, that parking lot is...
I couldn't help it, you know, that, that was eons ago.
What are you talking about, coughs on it?
Oh, my gosh.
How much, I mean, how about that bigger area, is it? I've seen it, but I can't really picture it.
Uh, we got, it's got to get rigged out, which they're gonna take care of, Jared, and then we'll get rough management and all the stuff right there.
We don't even know what it's gonna cough, yet.
Takes like seven hundred tons, so that'd be, uh...
Just a hundred thousand, you know?
Hey, bond money.
Why would you just chip seal it?
It's big. I think the city, you know, if they wanted to, I don't know. I make the motion to approve, Mr. Slade.
All right. We got a motion on the table to approve. Do I have a second? Come on, somebody second this, all right, I'll second it.
This is the city of Brandon, this is election year.
Uh, that's, I'm not doing it for that. We, we help others, and, uh, and this is a vote in precinct.
Well, when, when, uh, the, the big box...
He said fifty-eight.
It was sixty-eight.
Didn't he say fifty-eight?
Fifty-eight.
That's just the tonnage, ain't he putting it down? Oh, shut up, Mike.
The only thing, come on, listen. You and the big precinct in Richland, the two box precinct there, got that big parking lot there, when it's just going, y'all gonna help us, we got all this traffic coming in here.
Put the motion out there.
Four thousand.
Well, I mean, we have done a lot down at Richland and Florence and helping them to...
I'm talking about the precinct.
I know, we just hadn't got there yet, but we have done more than fifty-eight thousand in places down there. We built a road to help the school. That, I mean, we try to help these other towns.
That's the school project, yeah.
You wanna do something with it?
I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
I mean, this is easy.
That's all I'm saying.
You don't have to vote for it, you don't have to, you got a, you got a motion and a second, now, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
What?
What, you only vote against it?
Okay, it's just...
Man, you're showing your collar's hair.
No, it was just, he dogged me, like, I'll get out.
I think that's three to one.
Yes, sir.
Three to one, all right.
Oh, Jared didn't vote against it?
I didn't vote against it.
You didn't? I didn't hear an aye.
I did say aye.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
I just opened your door up, so what you gonna do?
Four o.
All right.
Can we move on?
Yes, let's move on, motion pass.
Okay, item A, I think, uh, this is the ratification of our initiation of the outdoor burn bans effective the twenty-fifth through the twenty-fourth of October, twenty-fifth of September through the twenty-fourth of October is recommended by the Forestry Commission. This burn ban applies to the activities of the Forestry Commission to certified prescribed, I'm sorry, this ban does not apply to the activities of the Forestry Commission certified prescribed burn managers and agriculture field burns.
Oh, really? So they can still do it?
Yes, sir.
Well...
There are some requirements for agriculture field burn. Uh, obviously, the fire coordinator's not here to give you all of the details, but some of which that I'm aware of, is that there's a requirement, they do a requirement to disc around the, uh, the exterior of the field that they're burning, to account for the possibility of any kind of pass-through. So there's some specific requirements, but according to our fire coordinator, the agriculture community in Rankin County is familiar with our burn ban practices. And it is unusual for him to find our farming community needing a whole lot of direction on it, okay? So it's just not...
I mean, I don't think we're doing anything different than we normally do for a burn ban.
That's correct. This is, this is typical of all of our burn bans, I think one other time in the past, we excused county, the road crew was involved in several projects that required some burning, um, and so we had to exempt our own road department from our burn ban. Uh, but, uh, in this particular case, that has, this is a typical one, we didn't make that particular exception.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve, uh, this burn ban, and a second, a motion by Bob, second by Jay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass.
Okay, item L, Mr. President, this is simply an update, it's information that I want to pass along to you guys to make sure that we're on the same page and that the record is clear, uh, as to the relationship of the Richland Creek Drainage District and this particular board. Back on July the fifteenth, uh, one of the commissioners for the Richland Creek Drainage District appeared before you and gave a, a presentation, about a fifteen-minute presentation. Uh, the idea behind which was to advise the board about some requests for federal funding that the Richland Creek Drainage District had initiated. Uh, and it was kind of advisory in nature, just to let you know that they had actually received a grant to do a study. Uh, the purpose of the study, which will be conducted by the NRCS, uh, or under the direction of the NRCS, was to determine, uh, the actual appropriate scope, scale, boundary of the drainage district, that is, whether or not its current configuration was adequate to address the drainage issues that they are facing. Uh, that study is either underway or about to be underway, but we are told that that study is probably two years away from completion. Uh, maybe as far as two years out before they have any results from it. Uh, the, one of the purposes of the study itself was to allow them to better communicate with areas of the county that may be being benefited by the drainage district, the improvements that are part of the drainage district, so as to better account for the costs of maintaining those structures. Uh, and so that was presented to you, uh, along with, uh, a comment or two from the commissioner, that while they were not making any requests for funding at that time, July the fifteenth, uh, they would probably be back in front of the board with some sort of funding request, okay? On August the fifteenth, or sixteenth, I don't remember the date, uh, the other commissioner, there's two, the other commissioner wrote us a letter, uh, to the board and said, we think we're gonna need somewhere around a half million dollars to properly maintain the improvements that are already in place for the next fiscal year. That came to us mid-August. Of course, as you guys recall, we're up in the middle of our budget preparation by that point, in fact, by that point, we've already got pro, pro formas, uh, we've already got our budget essentially set, we're fine tuning a couple of things, but at that point, we're receiving objections to abject tax assessments, and we, I mean, it's all manner of stuff that's going on, as you know. But I wanted to clarify something with you, even if we had been told on July the fifteenth, a number that would be representative of a funding request, even if we had been told, uh, it would not have mattered. Um, and I think there is a lack of understanding on the part of the Richland Creek Drainage District leadership, uh, as to exactly how it is that a drainage district under Mississippi law can acquire funding. It does so in very limited and specific ways, none of which include coming to the Board of Supervisors and asking for money. I want to make that clear. So, the, the presentation to you and the letter that you received from the commissioners was a direct funding request, which this board cannot legally provide. The way that the drainage district acquires funding is to assess the area of benefited acreage that it has been jurisdictionally provided by a court order, a chance record order, they assess the benefited acres, they make a determination as to what is the benefit to each acre, all of which, this is all done at an engineering level. They present that information to the chance record, and they ask the chance record to assign the benefited acres with a cost. They calculate that, and they bring that information to this board, and then this board has to go through, with tax assessments assistance, has to go through and determine what is the appropriate millage that should be assigned to those acres to generate funds that are then payable to the district. That's how the process works. So, the drainage district, instead of coming to this board and asking for money, has to go through that process and get a court order that it then brings to this board, which has not happened. Okay? So that's the update that I wanted to provide to you. We had meetings with these guys to talk about what the county is doing from a stormwater management aspect. Uh, we laid it out that what this board is mindful of is the need to cooperate fully, that we would like to look at this from a global perspective for our county, all of the county, looking at stormwater management issues and try to see if we can work together. We still hold out hope that there is an opportunity that we can cooperate, but at this point, I, it's hard to know exactly where we're headed with all this, okay?
I think that email that I was told about, that he sent to all the mayors, which are throwing us way under the bus, you know, for not giving their five hundred thousand, but blaming us for not being able to proceed, but I, I'm assuming that million dollars they were, uh, that they have, I think, been approved for.
It's one point five, yes, sir.
And so, without our match, are they not gonna be able to move forward?
Uh, no, so that, the, the study money that they received, the one point five million?
I thought it was for actually getting some work done.
No, so that money has been appropriated to the NRCS for that study, and that study is underway. It's, it's in the process of being made, ready to go out.
Yeah.
If we need to send a, send a letter explaining the law.
Yes, sir, and that was my next, thank you, Jared.
I think them two...
One of the board members is, is a lawyer.
Right, right.
I mean, I'm not...
He knew.
Uh, he's talking about the mayors.
Jared, Jared's talking about the mayors.
Yes, sir, so what I would like to see this board do, if, if possible, if I may, Mr. President, is to ask for you to authorize your, your board attorney to send a letter to the Richland Creek Drainage District Commissioners, laying out what the law requires as it, as it, uh, applies to this idea of acquiring funding for the operations of the district, which by the way includes maintenance. And so, uh, lay that out specifically, point by point, here is how you do this, uh, and make it clear in that letter that this board is prepared to cooperate as long as the requests that come before it comply with the law. Uh, the second thing that I would ask is that you allow me to communicate by way of copy to each of the mayors who have received communications from one of the commissioners, indicating, I believe inaccurately at best, that this board somehow has stood in the way of the drainage district acquiring adequate funding.
Yeah.
I want to set the record straight and make it clear to everyone, but I don't want to do that until you guys are, are comfortable, uh, with the approach.
Well, I, you know, I don't want to say that's the only reason we didn't do it, I'm not so sure how to vote and give them money anyway, you know, so...
I would like, I would like to say we'd consider it, not, I mean, if they bring us something that is in line with the law, and that, we'll consider it, I don't, I don't want to leave it too out there.
Let, let me, let me make it more clear, so that it, so that there is no confusion. You are not legally permitted to hand them money.
I mean, we just have a lot of drainage issues in the whole county.
Yes, sir.
We'll just say legally, but this is on legal side, leave it that way.
Like, it, it is for a fact, they don't assess enough, and they need to address that in some way.
That is correct.
And, and when I was out of here four years ago, we sat down with them, and they just, that's what they needed to do, they don't have enough money to keep that ditch clean and keep the weed control and stuff like that, they just don't, but they need to assess those people or figure out a different way of mechanism.
That is correct.
That's up to them to do it, that's not our problem, I mean, we don't want to help them, but...
But let, let me make it clear, if there's other folks listening to this conversation, so I want to make it as clear as I can possibly make it, this board cannot provide funding to the drainage district, you cannot. You can, you can let them borrow money, you can loan them money under a note, the law allows that, okay? So that's one option, I don't know if they'd be willing to take that, 'cause how are they gonna pay you back? They don't have a revenue stream, okay?
They don't, they can't...
They may as well do a revenue stream, if they're gonna go through that trouble, right? To be able to qualify to borrow, they can borrow against, borrow from this board and pay it back over an agreed-upon note, okay? They can go through the process of defining the benefited acreage and look for a, go get a court order, which by the way, there's a process that they have to go through to do all that, okay? But if they can get a court order and bring that court order here, you will not have discretion at that point, by the way, you'll have a court order that says you will assign the millage that is called for under that order. There's a lengthy process to get to that point, uh, that, that I could go into, but I don't feel like I need to. The third thing that they can do is they can issue bonds. Those are the three ways that they can acquire funding, none of which includes coming and asking for money. So I would like to set those three ways out for them, cite the statute to them, and copy our mayors. And copy the mayors.
Second.
Who have been led to believe that this board somehow has stood in the way of progress.
That's just normal, I would blame the board supervisor, call them.
Mr. President, if I may, if I may, at this point, since I didn't ask for action, Bob, if we could add action to authorize the board attorney to send a letter to the Richland Creek Drainage District responding to their request for funding.
I make my motion.
Second.
All right.
Add this to the agenda.
Yes.
We're adding this issue to the agenda, which would allow Craig the authority to send out a letter, but it's adding this to the agenda and, uh, which one of y'all made the motion?
I did.
All right, Mr. Morrison made the motion, Bob seconded it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion to add it to the agenda passes.
Motion to, go second.
All right. Jared, uh, makes a motion to approve this act and Bob seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Uh, any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, are we done with that one?
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, on, on G, I make a motion. We table this till Thursday. City of Brandon's having a special board meeting today at one o'clock to put this project to bed, one way or another.
Wait a minute, you already took the money and put it on East Metro.
Uh-uh, we never voted on it.
I know we haven't voted on it, but you told all the mayors, you were behind it.
Mayor kind of usurped himself there, because the board never did delineate and say this is what they want to do. Uh, so, uh, they're gonna make that decision at one o'clock today. And the mayor kind of stepped out there without really having permission to do so, so. But the board is gonna decide today whether or not they're gonna try to make this a priority or not. Uh, and I don't think they will, because they kicked two of their NPO projects back, you know?
They have?
Yes.
Which ones?
The, the Burnham Road and the Shallow Road, uh.
Overlays?
Sure have. So that, uh, I just, I, I got tired of getting caught in the middle and I told them, "Your board needs to make a decision. They want to do it, that's fine, do it. If they don't want to do it, that's fine. Let me know and then I'll present it back to my board," you know?
Well, you know, you just spoke about the, you know, Southern Pine, they need to relocate their facility and if they're, they have to put a substation.
Oh, for a substation.
Where that supposed road was going, that was right where their land that they have.
Yeah.
And if that's a possibility, they are gonna go buy another piece of property, but they need to be made whole on, you know, having to spend money to go buy more property.
This is something we can talk about on Thursday, if there's a need. And my guess is after today's meeting, there's not gonna be a need to have a discussion other than to say what we're gonna do with that two million.
All right.
All right, let's, uh, table this.
We're gonna ask Miss Janice to put item G on, on the board meeting on Thursday.
For discussion.
Do we need a vote on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
No action. All right. Now then, let's move on to Ms. Judy.
She's not here, I guess we can move on.
Judy was here. She indicated to me that, well, there was, there was a, a request that had been made on behalf of Almond, uh, for the board or for our maintenance department uh, to take responsibility for a part of the painting of the build-out and, uh, the, uh, the impression that I got was that the board wasn't interested in that, that we preferred that Mr. Almond and his crews take care of all of that and assign a dollar figure that we could then incorporate into whatever the request was gonna be with respect to the rental. And where we stand today is that I do not have in my hands, in my possession, a final figure for the build-out cost. I do not have that information. I can't present what I don't have.
This is just getting drug out and drug out and plowing, plowing.
Well, the one thing I don't want to see happen is they come back after they tear out them countertops and want to bill us for repairing the floor. Well, that's exactly why we suggested leaving it to start with, so.
That's what I said last time.
Yeah.
You grab all them holes.
We'll see, we'll see. Hopefully they won't, it'll, it'll be a moot point, so.
So what, what we need to do, I think it's obvious, what needs to happen at this point is there needs to be a final discussion post-build-out with the landlord as to costs and allow this board, at, at that point, this board needs to entertain what, if any, request is gonna be with respect to the rental. Is that the moment where we stand, is thirty-six hundred dollars per month for all of the space once the build-out is complete? That's, that was where the board landed, uh, as far as the discussion is concerned. So, at this point, that's all that's been authorized.
I mean, he gave us a quote for it, you know, I assumed it was, you know, turnkey, but it wasn't.
In the neighborhood of twenty-one-ish, twenty-two?
Ten.
Okay.
I say, could, do you, do you, let's see, for a Thursday, get back, maybe you could reach out, whoever in the county can reach out to me.
Honestly.
In a day, we, we want him to do everything.
Honestly, you wouldn't give a quote that didn't include paint. I mean, it's gotta be painted. Sounds to me like, nah, I'd.
Little change order.
Yes.
Uh, whatever else comes up, he needs to take care of it.
Right.
So we want.
Is he where we can talk to him now?
I don't know the answer to that question here.
All right.
He's been sick, okay.
Thank you, Greg.
Nothing, no, no action there?
No, sir, no action. I'm just up there.
All right, Wanda, look at here.
Come on, girl.
We got a list.
Okay, good morning. Item A, authority to amend the fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget as of September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, to reflect actual receipts and expenditures for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen.
Master approve.
Second. Bob makes a motion to approve. Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item B, authority to transfer from the General County Fund to the Blue Cross Blue Shield Fund in an amount sufficient to cover September claims incurred but not paid.
Master approve.
Second.
All right, Bob makes a motion. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item C, authorization to pay the City of Richland one hundred and ninety-one thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents in satisfaction of the county obligation under the memorandum of understanding between the City of Richland, Rankin County School District and Rankin County Board of Supervisors dated August fifth, two thousand nineteen.
Master approve.
Jared, I'd expect you to make that motion.
I'm waiting her to get those up reading. Motion approved.
Second.
All right, uh, Jared makes a motion. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item D, authority to advertise with ZipRecruiter for the position of Information Systems Director.
Is that the one we used, Lauren?
We used several. We did use them, I believe, last time.
It is them, okay.
Master approve.
Second.
All right, I'll handle it. Jay makes a motion to approve. Bob seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item A, approval to apply for the DEQ Competitive Grant Household Hazardous Waste Collection in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars and authority to issue and execute the documents.
That'd be second.
All right, we have a motion by Bob, second by Jared. Any other discussion? Me. Being, I guess I don't have any in my district or something. What is this?
This is our.
You do.
House brand.
Dumpster.
Oh, on that day.
Hazard, yeah.
I got you, where you can write paint.
We'll take them out of your district and put them out in Robin Hood if you'd like. They can always use an extra one or two.
I thought Robin Hood had one there year-round.
This is the cost that our cost to pay for being disposed of.
I got you, okay. Uh, no, I, I really was thinking this was, what do you call it? Never mind, I don't even want to get into it.
Yeah, I know exactly what you're saying.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna leave it alone.
You win resource.
Leave it alone. All right, who made the motion? Let's see, uh.
I did.
Yeah, Bob made the motion, uh, Jared seconded the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
You done got it all flipped up.
I know, I've done it. Any opposed? I know, I don't oppose it. All right, motion pass.
Okay. Item F, authority for Rankin County to enter into a healthcare services agreement with Vital Core Health Strategies LLC to act as contractor in substitution for All Mississippi Correctional Services LLC for the healthcare services to our inmates and authority for the board president to execute that agreement.
Master approve.
Second.
All right, Bob makes a motion to approve and there's a tie between Jay and Jared, so I'll give Jay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item G, approval of the fiscal year two thousand nineteen year-end inventory and the annual disposition of assets report.
Master approve.
Bob makes a motion.
Second.
Jared seconds. Any others, any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. All right, under additional business to be discussed, I have one thing and it, this is, we're not, this is something hopefully we will have on the agenda. Uh, when, when is that, Janice?
October the seventh.
The seventh?
We need to advertise our other position too. Okay, all right, never mind.
All right, I'll be through here in just a second. Uh, I met with these people that represent Marcy's Law. This is, uh, not Mississippi-wide, it's nationwide, where they're going around and they're advocating for victims' rights, to where a victim has the same rights or equal rights uh, as the person that committed the crime, uh, or the alleged person. And it, I listened to them and I liked the ideas and what they're saying and, uh, helps them with even maybe after, uh, a trial and they're left out there and they don't know what's going on. But there was, and, and they want to come to us and they want us to endorse them, which other, there have been lots of endorsements going on and maybe even, uh, have our, uh, board attorney draw up a resolution, which that's, he, they're gonna be getting with him and discussing all this, but there was one thing that hit me. Uh, and I was all for, I mean, I was saying, wow, I don't see where, you know, and even ask them, where's the downside to this? What, why not? And they was, there is none. And then maybe that night, it hit me, well, if we're gonna provide law and attorneys and counselor, somebody's gonna pay for it. Is this something, I want us to find out, is this something that the county or state or, somebody's got to foot the bill? And that was never covered at all with me, so if you would, have him prepared to explain that.
What's it say? What's it say?
They, I mean, there was more documents than that, but that was just, uh.
Somebody's gotta pay for it.
Kind of how those things, uh, come to light. If it's, if it's seeking basically an endorsement for purposes of, of, uh, ramping up sort of a, a, a ground swell of grassroots support for what they're trying to do, it's not unusual for them to come to, uh, political bodies like this and, and ask for support. It gives a seal of approval, so to speak, of what they're trying to do. Most of the time, they have their own documentation prepared already. So my process is just kind of reviewing and making sure I don't see something in there that might get you guys out over your skis. But, uh, so it's, it's not a significant, i- if it's typical, and I'll have to ask, is this gonna be your typical deal? Uh, then it's not gonna be a significant amount of time for me. It'll already be prepared, uh, and I just need to find two.
Okay, good. That, that's all. It just, uh, later that day, it hit me when I, I, I asked for the downside and they said no, and but then I got to thinking, I know there's gonna be cost.
It's somewhere.
There's, uh, for.
Could be.
You know, Mississippi law provides for, uh, a, a measure of victims' rights. Um, we have a victim impact coordinator that's part of the district attorney's office and so, uh, I, I don't want the impression to be from you guys that we're not doing anything.
Right.
Uh, because we are. It has been for quite some time.
Yep.
So I'll, I'll just make that point, uh, not because I understand what this is about or, or how it might deviate from what we're already doing. I just have to look into it.
Thank you. All right, uh, do we have a need for executive session?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Make a motion to discuss the need.
Second.
All right, uh, Bob makes a motion to discuss the need for, uh, going to an executive session as it relates to personnel and.
That's the second, that's the second motion.
You gotta do that in second, okay? All right, well, Jay seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor? All right, motion passes. Now then.
I made the motion to go into executive session, they discuss personnel, what else?
Litigation.
Litigation, possible litigation.
Bob makes a motion to go into executive session to discuss, uh, personnel and possible litigation and Jay seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. We are now in executive session. I hate to ask you people to, uh, step outside, but you'd be lots happier out there than in here.